Good evening. Thank you for joining us for a regularly scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, July 26th at 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk, if you'll call a roll.
Charlie Davidson.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sosetta.
Here.
Kyle Nordick.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps. Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And Councilman Schroeder notified me that he had a schedule conflict and Councilman Capps also said he was ill tonight and unable to make it, so we'll be thinking of him. We'll start out with our invocation by Councilmember Glover, and I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, we just thank you for tonight. We just thank you for all you've meant to us, all that you're going to do in our lives, Lord. We ask that you just give us faith to follow you, Lord, and just to help us with that. Pray for unity tonight in the council. Pray for discernment, wisdom, and guidance in doing the will of the people of Park City. We pray for provision for anybody and anyone in Park City who needs help with a job or food or housing, Lord, and we just lift all those prayer requests up to you tonight. Also protect our workers here in Park City as well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Opposed, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You're seated. Okay, we'll start out with approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? George Glover?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Charlie?
Second.
A motion and a second, seeing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes six to zero. We have no awards and presentations, public forum. I have one person signed up, Jeff Stone. Mr. Stone, you don't need to give your address. I've got it written here, so thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. I'm here to address the board because, as some of you know or may not know, I am the Vice President of, sure I am, High Ridge subdivision, and I have to inform my members next month that our dues are going up $250 a year. And when I announce that, I'm going to get kickback because nobody likes an increase. But the main reason I'm going to get a kickback is because of the new construction on 69th and Hydraulic where the apartments had been put in. I still don't feel like the cleanup has been done there. I've sent pictures to certain board members. Almost a month ago, they have mowed it. Nothing's been picked up. There is construction lumber, huge rocks, pipes, sheets of two-by-four, mounds of dirt with four to five feet full of weeds. And as far as I know, that area is totally finished and every unit is rent, excuse me, rented. So I'm asking the board to please help me out with getting that area cleaned up. The grass is not getting mowed down by the pond. Some of the increase that we're going to announce to our members is for upkeep. I think if you ride out by High Ridge, it's always a nice green lush area. We take good care of it. We mow the grass. We trim the trees. It's a great area to live. But I think the apartments on the corner have given us a bad name. We've had quite a few homes go up for sale and sell out there, and I think people are just tired of looking at it. There's crap in the pond. You know, I walk the pond and pull stuff out with a big hook, so I'm just asking the board to please help me out with that area there. The other thing I wanted to talk quickly about, the Ironstone Development backs up to my house. The people that own that land do not keep it up. They do not mow the grass. I've asked for that to be done, and they did come out. They came out and they mowed, if I had to guess, maybe four swipes around the field and called it good and went home. With that field backing up to my house, I get a ton of snakes. Big black rat snakes, brown snakes, garter snakes. I have a big dog that's been bit. She's got about eight stitches in her back right now, and I'm just asking for some help to get that field mowed and cleaned up. The owners of that field are liable for it. I still mow the entire pipeline between all the houses on Grove at no charge to anybody, so I'd like that field to be a little better taken care of. My last thing on the agenda for tonight is, exactly a month ago tonight, W. Gunzelman, who lives at 2669th Street, complained about the dust and dirt road on 69th, and she was told she'd be contacted. And she came to my house over the weekend and said no one had contacted her yet, and it's been a month ago tonight. So if someone could please just get back with that lady, I'd appreciate it. Do I have any questions?
No. I'll be in touch with Sean on it, and I'll get back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Okay, we're on to new business. This is discuss and consider library board appointment. And this is a mayor's appointment to the library board. We had a resignation that she was able to serve until the end of July. So, let's see here. Our new appointment is Kim Jantsch. I believe you guys have the information in your packet. I would entertain a motion or any discussion. Ben?
Yeah, I'm excited to see Mrs. Jantsch apply for this, so I'd make the motion to approve the appointment of Kim Jantsch as a member of the library board.
Kyle?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, she's a very longtime member of the community and very excited to serve as well, so I really look forward to that. So with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Okay, on to the Stormwater Management Advisory Board. I'm not sure if he's here tonight, Mr. Logue?
Yes, sir.
Yes, he is. He's hiding over here. If you want, you may come up if you want to, but you don't have to. He's a longtime resident of Park City as well and lives behind his house is a ditch. And I can remember probably about 15 or so years ago, he came in really complaining about his ditch. So I hit him up to serve on our board to help make our ditches better. So he's gratefully stepped up and is going to serve. So I would entertain a motion to approve Mr. Mike Logue to the Stormwater Management Board for a term expiring in 2024. Ben?
Yeah, it's good to see one of my neighbors coming in here on the board and someone from Ward Three, so I'd make the motion to approve Mike Logue to the Stormwater Advisory Board.
Tom?
I'd second that.
One quick comment, please.
Can you come to the podium?
The mayor was probably correct when he said I was rather aggressive. I'm not as aggressive in my old age anymore, so I plan to play well with others.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We're on to item seven, Sarah Steele.
Good evening. Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell. We're bond counsel to the city. Good to see many of you that I know. I am here this evening for two actions. The next two relate to new projects to be constructed in Park City. The one before you now is an economic incentive through industrial revenue bonds for K&amp;M Tire. They are building a new facility, expanding their footprint here in Park City. They project that they'll spend approximately $11,500,000 for construction, and this will be constructed on land that you just annexed from the city of Wichita, which is somewhere down south. I'm not exactly sure. So the first action item that you need to take is to convene a public hearing, accept any public comment, and then following that, closing of the public hearing, you need to consider a resolution of intent. This is an expression of intent of the city to issue these bonds. And then, as you may recall, we'll come back later with an ordinance that actually authorizes the issuance of these bonds.
Thank you. Okay, well, with that said, we'll open the public hearing at 7:11. If anybody is present that would like to speak in regards to this hearing, may come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, I would entertain a motion. Ben?
I do have one quick question. Maybe I'm ahead on this. It might be more for Sean than Sarah, but however, with this land and the proposed project.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to be dealing with any sort of land use change, zoning change?
No, sir.
Okay, that's good to notice. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Let me hold on a second. I'm sorry. I got a little ahead of myself there. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:12 PM. Okay, now, I'm sorry, I would entertain a motion, Ben?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 1125-2022, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, determining the advisability of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility to be located in the city and authorizing execution of related documents.
Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And do we need to do a roll call vote for this one? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Sarah, the next item is for you as well.
The next item relates to also a public hearing and resolution of intent. This project is for Munn's Properties. They intend to construct a, again, a new facility here. They estimate the cost will be approximately $5 million, and they will operate a couple of different businesses out of this location relating to trucking and oil and gas. Right, Sean?
Yes, that is correct.
So again, just need to convene the public hearing, consider the resolution of intent, and after you close the public hearing.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at 7:14. If anybody is present that would like to speak about this topic, please come forward. Anybody? I will close the hearing also at 7:14. And I would entertain a motion. Charlie?
I move to approve Resolution 1126-2022, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, determining the visibility of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility to be located in the city and authorizing execution of related documents.
Thank you, Charlie. Tom?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Sarah?
The last item on my agenda items is an ordinance to actually authorize the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for Southern Glaziers Wine and Spirits. They have acquired a building here to use as a warehouse distribution center and paid approximately $2.5 million for the acquisition of the project. And so at this point, they are ready for the city to issue these industrial revenue bonds. As you know, these industrial revenue bonds are not in any way an obligation of the city. You're not giving them any money. It's simply an economic development tool that you have in order to give them a partial property tax exemption as well as exempting any materials that they purchase from sales tax, which I don't believe they did.
No.
So just the property tax exemption is what you're granting them. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none. Okay, I would entertain a motion. Ben?
Yeah, I do. I am going to make a motion. I would ask again on this, especially with the previous two. This one has the address listed on it, but I think a site map on these attached items would be helpful.
Okay.
Just in terms of when she's, on the first one, when she mentioned the annexed land, it rang a bell. But I will go ahead and make the motion to approve ordinance 1149-2022, an ordinance authorizing the city of Park City, Kansas, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bond, Series 2022, Southern Glaziers Wine and Spirits, for the purpose of paying the cost of the acquisition, construction, and equipping a commercial facility, authorizing certain other documents and actions and connections therewith.
Tom?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion on this topic? Okay, seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Charlie Davidson.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sosetta.
Aye.
Kyle Nordick.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps. Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 10, receive a presentation on stormwater drainage for portions of Wyndham Creek subdivision.
Yes, sir. If I could just recap the last three, it's important to highlight the three economic incentives, both for KMM, Munn's, as well as Southern Glaziers. That equates to somewhere in the neighborhood of about $19 to $20 million worth of new investment into the city with about 90 new full-time employees over the next five to 10 years. So that's very good information. So, thank you, Sarah. Okay, as far as the drainage, if I could, Matt, have it converted over to the podium. I will give a little bit of, there's three different parts to this tonight. The first one is a presentation that was submitted by a resident in Wyndham Creek. It was submitted back in May of 2019. Then the next thing is I give an overview of how we've gotten to this particular point with the, following the data that we were as staff were able to come up with. So this was presented to us back by Harold Bowser, Mr. Bowser, back in 2019. It talks about the flooding of Wyndham Creek and community country park residents. This is the general location that we're talking about, just north of 45th Street, east of Hydraulic, and the nine houses that are located right along Steeds Crossing and just to the north of that, the little cul-de-sac at the top. Here are some pictures of after a rain event and the flooding that occurs or the drainage that occurs in the backyard of the properties. Again, these are his slides indicating where the area is where the water mostly pools, which is in between Steeds Crossing and the eastern entrance into the apartment complex on the north side of 45th Street. Pictures from around the area with arrows depicting where it is at. Additional photos. And some of the flooding or the water drainage actually comes from the south side of 45th Street, which is in Cedwick County, but it comes under the road, under 45th Street and culverts. This slide here depicts the current drainage throughout Wyndham Creek as well as the apartment complex and the surrounding area, even the farm field to the east of the neighborhood. The land drains, it is correct, the land drains down to 45th Street, then it drains along the west to this area that it has pooled, and then it drains behind the houses and into the pond on the north side of the apartment complex. This also depicts in red where on the south side, that land that is owned by the church that is in Cedwick County, how it flows to the central point and then to the culverts under the road and then to the north. Outlined in blue is where the resident has indicated that the water pools the most. He mentions that the city recently built a mound to keep the water out of the community, but all it did was force a grow around the mound that was done in 2017, and that is correct. The city did try to help rectify the situation back then. It shows that the path was only changed slightly. And then he goes on to contend that the previous intended or proper path, which he shows as along 45th Street over to Hydraulic and then north to the pond, that that would take care of the particular problems that the homes are encountering, that it affects a total of nine homes as well as the apartment complex. As he sees it, the problem is this, the area that is located between the two entrances to the apartment complex on 45th Street, that the water does not drain along the street there. That somehow the ditch has been filled in to where the water does not have the capability of running from east to west. And again, these are pictures that shows at the west end of the previous ditch where it's dry. And that it's been filled in. Contends that all that needs to be done is to restore the previous ditch. And by doing that, that would take the water along 45th Street from east to west, down to the corner of Hydraulic, around the corner there, go to the north and dump into the ponds, and then it would go to the valley center flood or the controlled floodway. Again, this was a presentation that was sent to staff back in May of 2019. Since that time period, initially, staff was first contacted about this. We met with the homeowners, and the initial effort was to see whether our staff, Public Works, could go ahead and do what the homeowners were actually requesting. It was pitched originally that we thought this was relatively easy and inexpensive to go ahead and create that ditch. That proved to be problematic just given the sheer congestion of existing utilities that is within the easement along 45th Street. Staff continued to do some research and investigate the ways to help mitigate, but discovered some documentation, as in the original drainage plans, pictures, topography maps, that were somewhat contrary to what was being proposed by the homeowners. The city engineer got involved to determine alternatives and the associated costs, but again, the residents were not happy with that and expressed distrust of the actual engineer. An independent engineer assessment was requested and supported the details of the initial engineer estimate. Then finally, last April, the former mayor and myself met with the residents to discuss alternatives, but again, that was not received well as far as the proposed way of paying for those improvements. The residents and the HOA, the homeowners association as well, have indicated numerous times that this is in some way, shape, or form the city's fault or and/or responsibility. In addition, they believe that the apartment complex bears responsibility as well as the developer, the builders, and the previous engineers who designed the drainage plan to begin with. So from their presentation, the next several slides that I'm going to show are excerpts of the drainage plans that we have on file, Platts, as well as some historical pictures of the apartment and the Wyndham Creek Second Edition and the surrounding area. This first picture here, and it's note, it's important to note the date, is of country park apartments. It's their drainage plan, which goes prior to any construction being done. This was submitted and approved by the city, both planning and zoning and council back in 2002. If you notice, some of the things that I highlighted, I pointed out in red are the elevation lines, because this shows the original east entrance into the apartment complex, and just to the west of that is a natural occurring crest. Where the resident has contended that that ditch has filled in, this is a natural crest. That's where the hill resides. The elevation there is 1349, and to the best of our determination, the elevation has been 1349 at least back to 1967, which was the last topography map that we were able to find and correlate to that elevation. In blue shows where the flow of the drainage is supposed to go according to the drainage plans. From the crest, it goes to the west, down to the corner and round, but to the east, it does go directly behind the houses. The next drainage plan is Wyndham Creek drainage, a second edition drainage plan, and it's from 2003, a year later. It does show that the drainage is supposed to go back behind the homes on the western side. It says Wyndham Road, but that's actually Street, Steeds Crossing. And then once it gets to the corner, it's to take a turn to the west and go into the pond itself. If you, again, look at the elevations, it goes from 1348, 47, 47, 47. to go ahead and create that ditch. That proved to be problematic, just given the sheer congestion of existing utilities that is within the easement along Forty-Fifth Street. Staff continued to do some research and investigate the ways to help mitigate, but discovered some documentation, as in the original drainage plans, pictures, topography maps, that were somewhat contrary to what was being proposed by the homeowners. The city engineer got involved to determine alternatives and the associated costs, but again, the residents were not happy with that and expressed distrust of the actual engineer. An independent engineer assessment was requested and supported the details of the initial engineer estimate. Then finally, last April, the former mayor and myself met with the residents to discuss alternatives, but again, that was not received well as far as the proposed way of paying for those improvements. The residents and the HOA, the Homeowners Association as well, have indicated numerous times that this is in some way, shape, or form the city's fault and/or responsibility. In addition, they believe that the apartment complex bears responsibility, as well as the developer, the builders, and the previous engineers who designed the drainage plan to begin with. So from their presentation, the next several slides that I'm going to show are excerpts of the drainage plans that we have on file, plats, as well as some historical pictures of the apartment and the Wyndham Creek Second Edition and the surrounding area. This first picture here, and it's note, it's important to note the date, is of Country Park Apartments. It's their drainage plan, which goes prior to any construction being done. This was submitted and approved by the city, both planning and zoning and council, back in 2002. If you notice, some of the things that I highlighted, I pointed out in red are the elevation lines, because this shows the original east entrance into the apartment complex, and just to the west of that is a natural occurring crest. Where the resident has contended that that ditch has filled in, this is a natural crest. That's where the hill resides. The elevation there is thirteen forty-nine, and to the best of our determination, the elevation has been thirteen forty-nine at least back to 1967, which was the last topography map that we were able to find and correlate to that elevation. In blue shows where the flow of the drainage is supposed to go according to the drainage plans. From the crest, it goes to the west, down to the corner and round, but to the east, it does go directly behind the houses. The next drainage plan is Wyndham Creek Drainage, a Second Edition Drainage Plan, and it's from 2003, a year later. It does show that the drainage is supposed to go back behind the homes on the western side. It says Wyndham Road, but that's actually Street, Steeds Crossing. And then once it gets to the corner, it's to take a turn to the west and go into the pond itself. If you, again, look at the elevations, it goes from thirteen forty-eight, forty-seven, forty-six, forty-five, forty-four, all the way down to the pond where it's around thirteen forty-one. That's the natural flow according to the drainage plans. The next slide is a copy of the actual plat for this portion of Wyndham Creek Second, and it is important to note that the areas that are highlighted or circled in red are the only place on the entire plat where it is listed that there is a twenty-five utility and drainage easement. Everything else is listed strictly as a utility easement. Everything else within the entire neighborhood is all taken care of via stormwater drains under the streets. This one, the drainage, is designed, proposed to go back behind the homes, around the corner, and into the drainage pond. Are there any questions at this point? The next, there's several different historical pictures going back to 2002, before there was any improvements. Then the next one is 2004, when the apartment complex was started, 2006, 2010. At this point in time, in 2010 is right when they're building Steeds Crossing, but still no homes had been developed to this point. It wasn't until 2012 that there was finally two homes that were built. The important things to note about the two homes that were originally built is the permits were pulled for the houses and the certificates of occupancies were done on the exact same day. In other words, these homes, not that it makes much of a difference, but they were built by the same developer at the same time they were spec homes, they were not built. So they, both of them were built at the same time. You can see that later on in 2013, when all of a sudden sod was finally installed. If you measure it out according to Google Earth, the sod was stopped strictly twenty-five feet away from the back of the property, and that was what was identified as the easement for the drainage was the back twenty-five feet along the property line. But if you go just two years later in 2015, you can start to see some visible evidence that the drainage was not contained strictly to the back twenty-five feet of the property, that it has migrated more towards the middle of their backyards. Hence, the frustration with the residents there, not being able to use their full backyard when there are rain events. Compounding the problems was the actual fencing, the wooden privacy fencing at the time. So in 2017, that's right about the time that the staff did try to build the berm to help alleviate some of the issues, seeing if it could be directed down towards Forty-Fifth Street to the west like the residents were proposing. Also, at the same time, it was recommended to the residents that they take various segments of their privacy fence and make them wrought iron fence so that it wouldn't back up in their yards. You can actually see this in 2017, the measurement of where the water flow is, it's actually thirty-five to forty feet off the back of the property line rather than the twenty-five foot that it was projected to be originally in the first place. Since that time, we've gone out and taken some pictures. This is from the backside of the properties, from taking pictures of their backyards, starting from left and working our way to the right. That is actually from the most southern house and working our way to the north. As you can see in the first picture, the wrought iron fence is only about eight to ten feet off the property line, which is where the easement is. But then as you start working your way to the north, there is definitely a distinct hump, and drainage is going more towards the middle part of the yard, working our way down approximately twenty-five feet off the property line, to by the time you get to the third and the fourth pictures, it's halfway in the middle of the yard where you can see the dip or the valley, which is creating the problem for the residents. To my knowledge, we have never heard any reports of any of the drainage impacting the actual homes themselves, just the ability to use the vast, the majority of their yards. At the same time, residents brought up some concerns about some drainage on the south side of the street and how that that was creating some of the problems as well. So we went back to the historical aerials dating all the way back to 1970, and you can, it appears from history that somewhere around 1990s, late 90s, that's when the culverts were put in up under Forty-Fifth Street. You can see it as early as 1996 to where that drainage pretty much is starting to go to the center point of the property before it goes to the road and then up under the culverts. It is definitely more pronounced in 2000, 2003, and 2006. We actually contacted the city of Wichita as well as Cedwick County and asked them about the culverts to see if there was any way, and they refused to talk about the subject just because that's the natural, in their definition, that's the natural flow of where the drainage is supposed to go. So there was no reason for them to entertain doing anything other than what it's naturally supposed to do. Again, we had gotten the engineer involved in the situation. Once we determined that it was not at staff's level or capability to complete the repairs, survey was gone out and done. This shows various element, elevations of the lines out there, grades. It is, again, highlighted in red that right there in the center of it, the elevation is the same it's been since 1967, it's thirteen forty-nine. That's, that's been verified, not only that was that what was called for in the drainage plan back in 2002, twenty years later, this is what the actual elevation is, is thirteen forty-nine. Still trying to figure out if there's a way to accomplish what the residents had wanted, we started looking at what is there existing. The most eastern driveway has a twelve-inch corrugated metal pipe for the conduit, the covert that goes up under it. Then the one to the west is a fifteen-inch rigid concrete pipe, and then the one that is over on Hydraulic is an eighteen-inch rigid concrete pipe. In order to dig out that ditch deep enough, in order to handle the flow, those culverts would have to be upsized. Originally, the engineer was asked to provide a rough estimate, a preliminary cost estimate, and this was the first one that was presented to the homeowners. It was for fifty-four thousand dollars. It was trying to accomplish what they had wanted to, the city to do. It would eliminate pooling in the area of concerns. It would do, reduce flow along the Wyndham Drainage Channel, but it wouldn't completely eliminate it because you still had the drainage from the properties themselves that would end up going to the north and around the corner to the pond. Stated back then, the possible costs in long lead times with AT&amp;T relocating the lines could be problematic, as well as it could create problems to where drainage, if it was all taken down to the corner, it may create problems where at Forty-Fifth and Hydraulic, to where that intersection would be overtaken, so. The engineer's estimate finally was updated. As we got farther along, we wanted to put it into a petition format. The original estimate was based strictly on twenty-four inch pipe, and it did not include any of the end sections. So taking a look at it, the engineer said that it would determine that some of it would require thirty-inch pipe versus twenty-four inch pipe, which is more expensive. It, he added in the extra end sections, riprap. The bottom line is the construction cost came in thirty thousand dollars more than the original rough estimate. In addition, the original estimate did not include engineering inspection and bonding and administration, and those costs are roughly right around thirty thousand dollars. So the petition proposed at the time was an improvement district, which included the nine Wyndham residential properties, paying fifty percent of it, and the Country Park Edition paying fifty percent of it. Both of that was met with absolutely no support. The residents didn't feel that it was their responsibility to help with this problem, and the apartment complex definitely had indicated that we would participate in order to go along and be good neighbors, but definitely not to a fifty percent level. They see it as more, their responsibility is ten percent or less. They don't have any problems with the drainage, in their minds, so. In summary, although one can understand and even sympathize with the residents as far as their frustration over the situation, to me, staff's opinion is the misconception that this is some way, shape, or form the city's fault or caused by their negligence is inaccurate. The city does approve drainage plans, but that is prior to any construction being completed. The developer and the builder grades lots, benches, swell cuts, berms, et cetera, prior to building permits being issued. Upon completion, the building inspector verifies the finished floor elevation and ensures that there is positive drainage away from the foundation. At that point in time, that is when the house or the structure is approved to code, and they receive a certificate of occupancy. If that time period happens to be in the middle of the November, nobody's putting sod in in November, so it may wait until springtime before there's actually a final grade put on the property and sod installed and everything. At that point in time, the homeowner, whoever's living there, could sit there and say, hey, I want a berm in the backyard. I want this done. I want more topsoil. There is no regulation or requirement for the city to come back and confirm that the homeowner has kept to the drainage plan, the homeowner and/or developer and/or builder. Right now, anybody can go do whatever they would like in their own backyard. So whether there's a drainage plan or not, and the city's not responsible for going back and inspecting it on an annual basis. So that's what it appears that it has happened here is, at the time when the homes were originally occupied, how they were landscaped, how they were graded, did not completely jive with the drainage plan at that time, so. Mayor, pending any questions? I do know that we have residents here tonight that would want to speak on this, and...
Yes. Does your, conclude your presentation then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We do have some citizens signed up. First, I have Mr. Harold Bowser.
Sean, if you would, pull up my presentation.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Kyle and Tom and Sean for the time that they've put in looking at this problem, and we're going to initiate Mike since this is a dish, there's no ditch, there's no sense in leaving him out of it. The, my name's Harold Bowser, I live in...
Sorry, let me just tell you, if you'd start out by saying your name, which you're just doing, but you have five minutes.
Okay.
We'll break it up for five minutes.
I might ask for longer if I can. I'm going to give a presentation. If you'd pull up that presentation for me, I'd appreciate it. I'll try and make it stick within the five minutes.
First thing. This is actually good timing because Mr. Stone is also on the advisory board for a drainage, so. We don't have a quorum, but we have a lot of people...
I have a little clicker if you want me to advance it, or I'll just tell you when to advance.
Whenever you would like me to advance, just let me know, sir.
Okay, go ahead and advance.
All right, I'll start your time now. Thank you.
We'll start off with a little history as I see it, and most of the homeowners see it. I thought it was about fifteen years ago, the city authorized, had final authority and responsibility for overseeing the development of Wyndham Creek. Part of that responsibility is to make sure that the homes are built in a safe and comfortable means to the best of their ability. In my opinion, there was a little bit of an oversight that, as Sean's previous presentation shows, we've got, and I want to take a little bit of issue with natural flow of the water, okay? Anyplace there's a ditch, you don't have natural flow of the water, okay? The purpose for a ditch is to divert the water from the natural flow. If we had natural flow of water, it would come from farmlands and go down through all of the homes in Wyndham Creek, but we didn't want natural flow of water, okay? So when he talks about natural flow of water, I'll go on to, I'll cover it in a little bit. But anyways, there's a little bit of an oversight. You can, I can, Sean has brought in the developer. He brought up the developer as not doing something or possibly pushing the responsibility off down the, down the way, but he's also shown where the, the water was supposed to flow along the back of the yard, okay? Nobody told the water that, so it flows where it wants to flow, and there should have been some sort of provision made to keep the water to that area as designed. So anyways, you guys had the oversight, the engineers looked at it, you guys spent time, not you guys, the previous administrations looked at it, and they, they, they did what they were supposed to do, they had an oversight, but then they went ahead and charged special taxes to the homeowners that the homeowners are now paying, okay, for that oversight. And, and that's where we think that the city does have some responsibility into it. If they want to point to the developer for not developing those provisions to retain the water where it was supposed to be, then you can go ahead and blame the developer. But the, the people who were not responsible for it back then are the people who are living in those homes now, if you go ahead and advance it now. The homeowners had some trust in the city that they, that they were overseeing it the way they were supposed to. So throughout the years, the homeowners have been complaining about this, and Sean has covered some of that on his presentation. Years ago, homeowners, oh yeah, so years ago, they were told to tear down the privacy fence and put up wrought iron fence so that the water could flow by the city, okay, council back then, so that the water could flow through the yard much quicker. And if you're an engineer, you know that, and I am an engineer by the way, water flowing erodes dirt quicker than it is if it just sits there. So in my opinion, that was a poor choice by the city again. Then as Sean pointed out, they came back and tried to fix it again and, and build up a berm. It flooded the apartment complex, so the apartment complex, from what I've been told, and Sean, if I'm wrong, please correct me, and if there's any questions while I'm going through this, please stop me, I'll be glad to answer them. But as Sean, Sean pointed out, they came down and tore the berm down because the apartment complex was, was flooding. So now the apartment complex built up the driveway, and all the water that's supposed to go through the apartment complex is now flooded back into the yards. So the yards are taking the full blunt of it. Next slide, please. Thank you. So two years ago, we, or nineteen, uh, three years ago, actually, we pointed out a simple solution for the city to, to follow, and we asked them to follow it. When I contacted the city, these are the excuses I was, I was given, okay? First thing they said was, well, it was designed that way. Well, I'm an engineer, I love to design things. I said, well, then all we have to do is redesign it. Well, wait a minute, it's on the website that way. Well, then we, all we have to do is change the website. And then the third excuse was, well, that's a crest. I said, yeah, you dig to make high spots, low spots, to turn crests into ditches. That's why you dig. And then they said, well, we don't know why we didn't do it, okay? So Sean, very respectfully, came out, looked at it, and he had one individual with him, and the individual that was with him, which Sean could tell you who it was, I forget who it was, stood back there and said, well, if we could get the water from there to there, it'd be fixed. And I do contend that if we did that, Forty-Fifth or Hydraulic would flood, so you also need to clean up the...
Counsel, we're at five minutes. Does the counsel wish to grant him additional time?
How much longer do you have on your presentation, Mr. Bowser?
Can I just get another five minutes? It should be done before then.
I'm fine with that.
Make a motion?
I appreciate it, Kyle. I made a motion to add an additional five minutes to Mr. Bowser's time, please.
I have a motion by Kyle, Charlie.
I'll say it.
Thank you, sir.
Seconded by Charlie. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Thank you all. The, so the gentleman who was with Sean said if we can get the water from here to there, and again, it would be fixed, and then you also have to clean up the corner around Hydraulic. I concur, or it would flood Hydraulic. Next slide, please. Let's go ahead and make this a little quicker. Go on. Yeah, as Sean said, the first presentation we were given was forty, fifty-four thousand, and even that wasn't responsible. Go on, I'll explain why. Yeah, he's got thirty-six, thirty-inch culverts. I'll tell you why I don't respect that. Go down again. This is May, this past May, Memorial Day. This is the flood or the rain information we had, and by reading this chart, you could tell that we had a lot of rain right around Memorial Day, okay? In fact, it was some of the worst flooding I've seen since I've been there. Next chart. Now, this is the flooding through the yard, and the, that yard, all that flooding goes right through that spot in the middle. The picture on the left is the flooding. The picture in the middle is the run, it, it all runs through that one spot, okay? And if you, I put the tape measure down there so that you could see that the distance across there is about eleven inches. And then if you look at the picture on the right, it shows you another scale, vertical, and it shows that the scale is about four... and it shows that the scale is about four inches off of the bottom of that, of that, of the ground. And even, even that has about a two-inch gap. So what we're talking about there is with this flooding, you're talking about an exaggerated conservative amount of 20 square inches. That water flows through 20 square inches. Go to the next chart, please. Now, a 12-inch covert, culvert, culvert, has 113, a cross-section of 113 square inches, okay? That's plenty compared to the 20 inches that we're looking at. But the engineering is proposing a 30-inch culvert, which has 700, over 700. So to look at the tape, to look at that picture, the scale you've got is that big. The city's recommending that big of culvert. I could crawl through that, okay? Now that costs, putting in that size culvert, costs far more than just the excavating alone. I'm not asking the city to put out $154,000, okay? I'm asking for some excavating. Just dig a ditch. If I'm wrong, we'll, we'll eat it. But we're talking, if you go back to the picture, go back one if you would please, the picture right in the middle, that's about 11 inches across that place, it would have 11 inches deep, no, 10 inches deep, for you to fill up that 12-inch culvert. It's only about two inches deep. Now, I don't know what type of rainstorm you would need to, to, to exceed that 12-inch culvert, but it'd have to be pretty serious. I'm the only one, all respect to the engineers, they have not stood out there in the rain, they have not walked through the flood, they have not taken pictures like this, they have not examined it, okay? In order to validate that 30-inch culvert, they'd have to go out there and verify this. So that's why I have no respect for the 134, $130,000 bill that you want to charge to the homeowner. I'm asking you to go out and dig a ditch. That's it. You don't need to change the culvert. I'll even go in and clean out the culvert for you. That's it. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Tom?
I have one, the manhole that this middle picture, where is that located? Is that the one back by the pond, or is that somewhere else?
No, that's the one by the pond.
So that's before it eroded?
Yeah, it's way, right now, it's under construction, they're trying to fix it.
Right.
And that's another thing, this, this is, this expense that you, that the city's putting out to fix this, this manhole is a result of the flooding. And it will occur again, may take 10, 15 years, but it will be flooded again and, and dry I'm done with my presentation, but I'll be glad to answer questions if you have one.
Any, any other questions? If you come up?
So again, my name is Jeff Stone, and I'm actually on the stormwater committee. I feel your pain. My backyards get water in it all the time. But, you know, does this happen like once or twice a year? You said Memorial Day, was the last time it happened?
Oh, no, it wasn't the last time. It was one of the most severe times. It happens about 12, about a dozen times a year.
A dozen times a year? And when you say to dig a ditch, who's going to maintain that ditch? Do you expect the city to come in and put big rock in? Or, you know, we can't just dig a ditch and let the water erode that ditch away? So what are your expectations on the ditch?
I haven't ever been asked that question, but if you want to, put a culvert in there and you don't have to worry about it, you can fill it over again, and it's self-maintained. But the ditch is there now, they have grass on them, and they, they pretty much maintain themselves. Right now, you'd actually be doing the city a favor by preventing this type of stuff. Plus, that pool that we talked about is filling in with dirt because of what the runoff comes down there, and all the dirt settles there, and so it's getting higher and higher and higher. So you're going to have to come back and maintain that ditch. If you had a water flow through there, it'd probably be better for the ditch.
Thank you. So Mr. Bowser, I just had a question for you, something you said a while ago, well, I'm not an engineer, obviously. You say you're an engineer, what kind of engineer are you?
Aerospace engineer.
Okay.
Aircraft you fly, I know.
Okay, I'm not, by any means. But you mentioned something about the, in the backyards, they hadn't put the wrought iron fences, and, and you said that that was a bad idea because that allows the water to flow, and if it stays there, it's better. And I just, I thought that's the problem, is pooling water.
Well.
We need it to flow, right?
Well, if you, if you have running water, it will erode the dirt quicker.
But if, there should be grass and vegetation that should hold that erosion in, right?
You're right, it slows it down. The grass and stuff slows it down, but if you look at the backyards, you're getting a big V in there, and it's going to get deeper and deeper and deeper. So the grass you see right there, you can see kind of a V, that V is going to get deeper and deeper and deeper. Now, I'll admit, if the water stands there, you're swapping off, you're swapping off problems. If the water sits still, it's going to kill the grass, okay? It doesn't erode the dirt, but it kills the grass.
Right, and that's what I mean.
So you've got two different problems.
So it's better to flow because if it sits in the grass, you have pooling water and then complaints about mosquitoes and bugs and standing water.
Well, we still got pooling water.
Which is expected, I mean, when you get heavy rains, you're going to get that. I mean, your guys' covenants even mentions that, about pooling water after heavy rains.
Right, normal pooling water is not a problem.
Yeah.
But I've got a big V in my yard right now, it rushes through there, and so, you know, we're talking about a hundred-yard ditch.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm not asking you guys to, you know, to build a bridge or anything like that, we're talking, in fact, if y'all would, if y'all would let me, I'd do it myself.
Charlie?
Yeah, just two questions, just so I'm clear. When you say you're wanting a ditch, you're talking about running from 45th North behind the houses, are you talking about a ditch from the north side of 45th running towards hydraulic? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yes, we already have a ditch that runs along 45th on the north side.
Uh huh.
It just comes up to the house and then dies. It just goes away.
It's going to that crest.
It goes to, it goes as far as that crest.
And you're wanting, you're, you're saying you want a ditch to run through that crest, is what you're saying? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then my other question was, what, do you know, what, what has caused the water to move from the 25-foot retaining area to now be more, as you move farther north, to be more in the yards? What, what has caused that, do you know?
Water, nobody told the water they need to stay against the, there's no provisions to get rid of the smart aleck remark. There's no provisions made to keep it up to the, to the 45, or that 25-foot ditch. Actually, all you need is probably about a foot.
Right, I guess, I guess my question is, did some homeowners put in some trees, or did they build something that has caused it to move into the middle of the yard, is my question?
I think the, and you can correct me, Sean, if I'm wrong, I think you'll show that eventually, initially, there was nothing there, and then homeowners come along and build up trees, but it was already running to the middle of the yards.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Well, I was going to say, Kyle and I both have been down there, Sean's been down there, and we've looked, the situation that I'm looking at, if we don't look at something on this, is that water is naturally running down behind the yards, whether it goes in the yard or around the yard, and it's making a corner and going to a pond. And the last couple hundred feet of it is going over a stormwater pipe that we have that comes off of Steed Crossing, and going right to a manhole and washing it out and pushing it into the pond. City's gone in there, dumped a whole bunch of big rock around it, and it's still going into the pond. So if, whether we resolve anything tonight or not, that issue's going to still exist, and we're going to go in there and fix a manhole, and it's still going to have the problem with water going around it. So I don't know how we address that.
Jeff?
Ben?
So this crest here, Sean, has, you said it's gone back to 1967. As, as far back as 67, maybe further.
Far back as, sorry, as far back as we can topo maps.
Okay, so the initial thought process behind there, that somewhere along the lines we came in and covered up the ditch, does not seem to be an inaccurate, inaccurate statement, is that correct? From the first presentation?
The fact that we covered it up seems to be inaccurate?
Correct.
And yes, that is correct.
Okay, it's always been that way since at least 1967.
The crest is there and has been for the last 50, 60 years.
Okay.
As best as can be determined.
Okay, I know we have more people.
After that, we're going to move on to the next person that wants to talk.
Okay, I'll go, real quickly, I just wanted to make a comment, there's also a fence being compromised back there because of the water drainage. To the north or south of that manhole.
The apartment fence?
Concrete fence, yeah.
Yes. The apartment complex is aware of that, yes.
I'll let go, go around.
Jeff? Thank you, Mr. Bowser, for coming tonight.
Thank you all.
I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
I would move to Sarah, I believe it's Pletcher. Hi there, thank you for coming tonight, you don't have to give your address.
Sarah Pletcher, 4647 North Steeds Crossing. My yard is the second one, it's one on the other side of that fence. When it rains, and it doesn't have to be like it did in May, it looks like that. I have zero use of the back two-thirds of my yard because of this. The concrete wall that separates my yard from the apartment complex is eroding underneath it because of this. The yard slopes now up towards the back because the yard's been eroded by the rain. The grass is dead, there's nothing keeping that water from flowing because it's been flowed away by the water. And it stands for more than just a day or two after it rains like it would in your yard. It's at least a week or two before my yard's dry, at least. So two-thirds of my yard is going unused because of this. I appreciate anything you all can do. It's not just us, it's the entire side of that, entire development, all the way to the lake. To your point, also, the manhole cover that keeps getting washed into the lake too. So whatever you can do, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, my name's Dan Reisick, I live with Sarah. So, no, there's only a couple things, I mean, we are new residents to the area, so the drainage problem hasn't been a lifelong project for us, so we don't have all of the information, and I realize that we all need to look at the facts and figure out what the facts are, and I can appreciate the present, both presentations, from Mr. Bowser and the, and the city. I would like to see a elevation of the backyards as they were before the apartment complex were built, and then as the, as the elevations over the years have changed. Was that included in your drawing of the backyard's actual elevation from where this is, the ditch is in our backyards?
We do have a copy of the drainage plan, which was done in 2003 for that whole entire neighborhood, which is what the developers should have graded the lots to prior to building.
So do we have the, the Google Earth imagery with the data points on it like you did for the streets and all the other stuff? Is that something that's impossible to get, maybe for the next meeting? Because the wall, you know where the wall is for the apartment complex, the slope that's coming down, and see how that's changed over the years as well? And again, I'm just looking for more data to see if there's some other solution that we can come up with. So if you guys could do that for us, we would greatly appreciate that. And anything we can do to help provide information, we'd be glad to do that, so, okay?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom? Do you have another?
No, I didn't have it pushed, but I do want to talk about the fence along the north-south line with the trees. I think there were some existing trees in there that were probably grown up against that fence that they let go. But they would have been well inside the 25-foot drainage easement, they'd have been back on the west side of it. Grading it back and bringing something up in the yard would be one of the fixes, but then that's still got the water going through, and my concern is what goes on around the corner. If you raise the yard up in the middle and put the drainage at the back, then we've still got the same amount of water going down through there. And it's compromising some of our hardware down around the corner, that's going to continue to happen. And so no matter what we do tonight, we've still got an issue that we're going to have to address again in 10 or 15 years, probably.
Well, if I may, the city engineer is here tonight, I'd like him to address as far as the compromised manhole that we're addressing at this time.
Okay.
So.
And then one of the other issues there too is that pond's settling in on the north end, so it's losing capacity.
But the pond is HOA, it's not a.
Right, no, I understand, I understand.
Thank you for coming tonight, Kirk. And I just want to mention one thing I didn't realize, but Terry Ford's also here, who's a member of the Stormwater Drainage Committee as well, so.
On that inlet you were talking about, right next to the pond, what we're looking at doing is putting a four-by-four concrete box with a grate on the top of it, which is going to be, it'll almost look like a cattle grate, it'll be like a decent-sized pipe with some pretty good gaps in it, so it'll pick up a lot of water that's coming down that way before it gets to the pond. You also, the other, one of the problems that's, that's causing this is the fence off the apartment complex, right at that manhole is one of the openings in that fence.
Right.
So the water's coming right off of that to that manhole. And what we're thinking about doing with this also is to try to keep it from getting undermined in the future, putting in a deeper inlet. You know, right now, we're looking at maybe three foot deep to, or four foot deep or something like that, but even adding two or three more feet to the bottom of it and filling it with concrete on the bottom, so that you have some stability at the bottom of the structure. And then put a new pipe over into the pond, get it a little bit lower. One of the restrictions that we have out there is, we looked at the sanitary sewer manhole, that storm sewer that's, that's going to this inlet is clearing that sanitary sewer by about this much, which means that, that manhole's pretty shallow, and that sewer pipe is pretty shallow.
I was going to say, I looked down in that manhole, it's only 30 inches deep, probably.
Well, it's a little more than that, but.
Or storm.
Well, you're talking about the storm manhole.
Right.
Yeah, the storm manhole's not very deep.
Yep.
That sanitary's.
It's just there to turn it, so, okay.
But that's, that's one of the problems that makes it a little more difficult to deal with, is that existing sanitary sewer line that serves the apartments, and how to get around that.
Okay. Ben, do you have questions for Kirk?
Yes, yes, thank you very much for being here. So we saw the estimate that came through from the city's side in terms of the engineering costs, the size of culverts and such like that. And then we heard from the residents that they proposed a 12-inch culvert there that would be able to hold capacity. And you're a professional. Capacity, there we go, I can't think of the word. In dealing with construction and engineering along that side, why, why is that 30-inch needed versus, or 36-inch needed versus, say, 12-inch?
The 12-inch isn't big enough. For the amount of water that we're trying to run through, the 12-inch isn't big enough. And, you know, we do calculations of it and everything else, and that's why we determined that it wasn't big enough, it just needs bigger pipes through there.
Okay, and then also part of that cost was associated with utilities being moved, is that correct as well, Sean? That would have to be moved by, by that part, was, I knew that you were saying about the AT&amp;T side, was that included in part of this cost?
That's, as part of the 113,000 for that, that's, AT&amp;T, if they, if we needed to move pipes, that's, or they're, that's up to them.
The 113, the initial estimate that was 54 or whatever, that was to take it through the two drives that go, through the two drives that go into the apartment complex. It'd be putting new culverts underneath there, cutting the ditch, and then letting it head down towards hydraulic. Then the additional later was, it's like, okay, it gets down to hydraulic, turns the corner, do we need to do something as it heads towards the pond down there? And then we looked at it, and it's like, well, yeah, we probably need to replace some pipe there also.
And the true increase in cost on that, really from the 54, was truly only 30,000 in engineering side of it, or in that portion of it, or, or in the construction phase of it? The other part was additional because of the fees and such like that?
Any, any of that type of thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so 30,000's really only the difference in number of what was originally.
Between construction costs, yeah, it was 35 or something like that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that was my question.
Okay. Brandy.
I guess I'm looking at the presentation from prior, so all the history. It looks like everything was done correct, and it was all to code when, when developers came in and built, so everything was done correctly, right? And approved and signed off on?
I think everything was approved and signed off, done correctly, I mean, there's always things that could be done differently. I mean, but all this starts, you know, the initial construction is where things start, and then it just kind of goes from there, so.
I guess I just, I mean, I understand the frustration of the residents there. But from the city's side, I guess I, I don't understand how we're being told that it's our fault that this is happening. I guess that's what I have a problem, is it being told that it's our fault, and then we've offered to do some things, but no, they don't want to step in and help us, help, you know, pay for that. I mean, I don't feel like it's their fault a hundred percent, but I don't feel like it's the city's fault a hundred percent either. So I guess that's where I kind of have an issue, like I said, I totally get the frustration, and, and I would love to see us do something to help out, to try to fix it. But I feel like it has to be a mutual relationship there, because I don't think it's one fault versus someone else's fault. I think it's just, it's natural, I mean, it's just natural.
And, and, and a lot of it's gonna fall on developers, but they're gone, so there's not a whole lot you can do about that. You know, I couldn't even tell you who built the apartments over there, or the guys that did the subdivision, they're gone, and it's, so I think that's probably why it kind of gets back onto the city, is because those guys are gone now. You can't go back on them, you can't even find half of them, probably, but.
But I mean.
We're also fifteen years down the road from this.
Same, same breadth, in the same breadth, though, are these the original homeowners of these houses? So who's to say maybe the original homeowner of these houses did, did something that caused this, that we don't know about?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, so, I mean, I don't, I feel like placing blame strictly on the city is a little unfair?
It's actually wrong. There was an initial comment that Mr. Bowser made that's just incorrect. He talked about oversight, and that the city had an obligation to see, once the drainage plan was approved, when the property was platted, before construction began by the developer. His, his implication or assertion is that the city had some obligation under its, under the laws of the state of Kansas or its city's ordinances, to make sure that everything was built according to that drainage plan, and that's just not correct. The city doesn't have any drainage ordinances, and there's no obligation. In fact, the state of Kansas has kind of a funky law about drainage inside cities. Drainage is considered to be what's called a common enemy. Which means that, that one picture that you had up here that showed real nicely the wrought iron fences and the water flowing down there, there's nothing. I'm, I'm accepting homeowners' association covenants right now, I don't know about those. But under the city's lack of any regulation, or the state of Kansas, any one of those property owners could put a big berm on the north side of their property and a big berm on the south side of the property, so they got no drainage. Now, that would make everything worse, but there's no city law that says they can't do that, there's no state law that says they can't do that. So the real, the problem I see is that the developer and the builders for the developer, when they built these homes, didn't grade them true to the drainage easement, which was twenty-five feet on the west side of the properties. And over time, the homeowners haven't corrected that, to the extent that they've had the opportunity to do that, they could put in dirt and do that. So to answer Brandy's question, I, I don't believe the city has any legal obligation here to do the work that's being asked that it do.
So to make a comment about the ditch being outside of the drainage easement. I, I can't say for sure because I'm not sure what it all looked like when it was originally built, but, you know, they put a bunch of viewouts. So when you put in viewouts, here's your opening. And if the opening didn't, wasn't high enough to get the water all the way to the back of the lot, they probably came in and, and cut a little swale in there, therefore the ditch moved closer to the houses. And I'm guessing that may be part of what happened with those.
All right, thank you, Kirk, thank you for your comments. Okay, Kyle, I'm sorry.
Hi, you're good, Mayor, I appreciate it. Kirk, real quick, I know you're headed back, but you can answer from back there, it's fine. The, the hundred and thirteen thousand dollar price, how accurate is that to today? Is that a relatively accurate price that homeowners or the city could see being incurred?
When we do estimates for, for things like this, we look at what we think is the maximum probable. So the eighty-four, whatever we have shown up there for construction, hopefully it's high.
Okay.
I mean, we did this, what, a year or two ago, and prices have gone up, but I think we still, hopefully are high with that number.
That's the only question I have for you. Sean, and so it seems to me that, it was said that the city kind of stepped in here in two thousand and seventeen to attempt to rectify the situation.
Yes.
In that rectification in two thousand and seventeen, it was identified that wrought iron fence need, portions need to be put up in fencing. Who, who identified that that would allow for even flow?
Do not know.
We don't know that.
Do not know, do not know whether it was a recommendation or a requirement. So bottom line is, the city didn't do it, I know that, so the fact it was probably strongly recommended that the residents put up a panel of wrought iron fence, I don't know.
That the city probably made a recommendation that wrought iron fences would alleviate.
Yes.
Okay.
Because within a drainage easement, residents technically aren't allowed to put things within a drainage easement. That includes fences. There's an understanding that if you put a fence in there and all of a sudden there becomes a problem, and the city needs to get in there and do some work. It's not the city's responsibility to replace that fence, that's, you don't, that's why you don't build things in an easement, so.
Have we, have we heard anything from the apartment complex complaint-wise regarding these drainage issues and damage to their fence?
When this originally got proposed, reached out to the owners of the apartment to sit there and say, what kind of issue is this? And because from what I had been told at the time in two thousand and seventeen when the berm was put, that that created more of a problem for the, the apartment complex, and the apartment complex indicated that they are fine. That their drainage, the way it is designed, is it does drain into the parking lot. That's where all the grates are, and that's where the stormwater collects. They are aware of the fact that their fence, their wall, which has its own particular easement, has some structural issues related to it. On the east side of the property, that wall only has about four or five holes that are two-inch in diameter for the whole entire length. They have more holes on the north side of the wall, which are four inches in diameter, they have about five of those, and allows for more drainage to go through. But yes, they're gonna, they're gonna need to do some required maintenance. As with any landscape-type wall, over fifteen, twenty-some-odd years, usually requires some kind of structural stability to come back in, to prop it back up and make certain it's true and correct, so.
Okay, my last question, if the city did decide to move forward with the Forty-Fifth Street project, what is the estimated timeline? How many utilities would need to be relocated or contacted?
Kirk would probably be a better person to answer that, I know that when we originally talked, one of the things that we had proposed was the long lead times for getting AT&amp;T out there, so.
Sounds good. So there is a fiber optic line there, there's a gas line, we also have a water line in that, in that ditch line area, so they would all have to be relocated. The, I believe is it the gas company, when we talked about this project being a possibility, they were kind of hesitant because they don't have a lot of room to put their gas line back in. With KDHE requirements, there's gotta be a separation between the water and the gas, and they're gonna have to bring it up to compliance, and I don't know exactly where they're gonna move their stuff to. So those are the three primary utility issues.
When it comes to Kansas Gas, does Kansas Gas have to sign off on any utility movements prior to us initiating construction? Or is it just a process that we say we want to do this and then notify them to relocate?
That's, that's actually a question, sometimes there's, there's costs associated with relocating those utilities, I don't know if in this situation there would be. But the, they would have to come up with a design plan, that would have to, I think you'd have to end up going to Kirk's office, actually, because we have to, to get all the placement on all these utilities, and then get with the utility company about moving those and make sure everything's where it's supposed to be.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Tom.
I just have one other question, or one other comment, and that is that the ditches it looks at now, like now, on the ditch, or how the drainage was starting to wash in a little bit on the corners and stuff like that. We had that same thing south of the Best Western, the old Best Western. And their easement, which the city has no control over, going south, and it started looking like that about fifteen years ago. Now it's about five feet wide and four feet deep. It just continually erodes, the amount of water that goes behind those houses is significant. So I think the city's gonna have to do some maintenance back there in our drainage easement eventually. I don't know where to take this, I just think, I would like to see some of it diverted out of there, maybe don't get all of it out of that drainage easement area. But let it flow down hydra, or Fifty, Forty-Fifth Street, I would like to see what it would actually cost us to go fit, do something with it and partner with them. And resolve two issues, one they've got now and one that we may have in the future. It may not be cost-effective, right now we're looking at a hundred and twelve, but is that all, all that we've got, or is there something else we can do? I'm, I'm looking long-term on our drainage issue versus what's happening down there now, so, okay.
Okay, Ben.
So all ease, all easements, whether stormwater, drainage, utilities, those are always still the owner of the property? Those are still the responsibility of the property owner in all those cases to manage and maintain those, the, the property itself, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Okay. So here's, here's kind of where I sit on this. I think that in terms of the city trying to step in and engage ourselves in private property matters, that we open up ourselves in a lot of ways to anyone and everyone across the city that would be looking for, for the city to step in to fix issues that they have. When I bought my house, it came with certain responsibilities, certain acknowledgements, and things that I needed to be aware of. For instance, my backyard was actually built up, part of it was built up and fenced in while there are, there was a false wall or fake wall basically built around that, where the sides and the far backyard sloped down for drainage issues. After, over time, that's starting to erode. And so now I'm in the process of fixing that wall because of the way the drainage was designed for flow in my neighborhood. I'm responsible for that. I'm the one paying for that because it is my property that I bought. And so I think that we have to be very careful whenever we want to sit in there and start to interject ourselves on personal property matters. You can liken that also to the mowing that we've talked about, and how we've had complaints over mowing of ditches that fall under personal property and complaints, why don't we mow those ditches? Well, because if I mow, if, if the city begins mowing ditches along hydraulic for the sake of aesthetics and negating the responsibility of that personal property owner, why can't I get my ditch mowed? I think we have to be very, very careful, because again, we do open up ourselves, because if we're gonna do it in one situation, we have to be consistent and do it in other situations. And according to everything that's been presented and seen, elevations have not changed in terms of where the berm was at or that, that crest was at, that's been there for fifty years at least. Where the drainage ditch was designed, or the drainage flow was designed according to the two thousand and three study that was signed off on by all there. It's doing exactly what it was said it would do. Now, it has expanded beyond there, and that's, that's going to happen over time, because we all know settlement happens, settling happens on properties, on land and such like that. My question would be, and, and again, there's no way necessarily to, to know this over time. I don't know if anybody is original homeowners to that, to that house as far as the first time, I don't know that or not. I would wonder if, if that was ever presented to homeowners, that this is an issue that exists when they bought the house. I, I don't know, and I'm not saying yes or no, that, that's what happened. But in cases where it's not, I think you'd have a bigger issue with the realtor and those that, that, that might have misled or, or left out that fact when it was a known issue as far as that twenty-five-foot drainage easement. That, that's my biggest concern in that. I think there's reasonable solutions that can be made here. But again, I think we have to be very careful from the city's side of what precedent we set by interjecting ourselves on personal property matters.
Thank you, Ben, Brandy.
I was just gonna make a motion to receive and file the report.
I'd like to have us make, decide on how to proceed, if we want to take no action on it, so staff knows what to do. But I feel like I'm the one that called this presentation to happen, I feel like Mr. Bowser and the folks down in Wyndham have, you know, pled their case over the years, and nothing's been done on it. I just feel like they deserve an answer. Are we gonna do something, or are we not gonna do something? So I would ask that if you do make a motion that we receive and file the report, that we also give some sort of a recommendation to staff so that both they know and also the folks from Wyndham know what we are or are not gonna do. So with that said.
At the moment, I don't have a recommendation, so I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
Good. I would entertain a motion on the action item. Kyle.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say some stuff, and, and I understand that, you know, this is probably one of the harder decisions and, and things to hear as a citizen. That you feel like you've came and you've pled your case, and that you feel like people are letting you down and not doing what needs to be done from your perspective. As a city official, though, we also have our duty to ensure that we're, we're not stepping into the wrong boundary areas. As, as my colleague mentioned, you know, the city, we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that we're not just stepping out there and doing, helping out every situation that is out there that is uncontrollable in our means. So with that, I will make a motion to receive and file and say no action be taken on this item.
Okay, Ben.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Had a pretty long discussion, and I'm seeing no further, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Motion passes five to one. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, eleven, discuss, consider approving allowing mayor to enter into contract to relocate a conflicting water line at Sixty-first and Broadway. Simon.
Mayor and council, during the construction of the Sixty-first and Broadway roundabout, Apex was in there installing some drainage structures and found a water line that was not in the location that we assumed it was prior to the construction. This water line will need to be relocated to allow room for the drainage improvements. We kind of did this at an expedited rate, and we sent out bids to five contractors within the local area that perform this kind of work. We only received two bids back, one from Apex Excavation for twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and one from Mies Construction for ninety-one thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. Engineer's estimate was just over thirty-one thousand. This relocation is unbudgeted, it'll be paid utilizing the utility fund water budget, and staff recommends approval. Stand for any questions?
Thank you, Ben, if you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question here, real quick. So my, just off the top here is, there's a pretty big gap in pricing, even between, I mean, Mies is obviously, but we only have two. And then the second one that came in under the, the engineer's estimate, still pretty hefty price difference, not comparative to the Apex, to the Mies Construction one. Are we, do you feel confident that this is?
Yeah, the engineer's estimate was thirty-one thousand, so Apex is pretty close, Apex is already working on the project, so they're the ones actually doing, performing the work for the drainage improvements, so they're, they're already there with their equipment, so.
That makes sense, then.
Yep.
And I will say this, with Apex being there, there's a time-sensitive issue with this, because we don't want our final project to be delayed due to us on a water line relocation, so that's kind of a big deal. And they happen to be the lowest bid. And they happen to be the lowest bid. Ben?
No, I'm done.
You're not gonna make a motion?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna make sure everybody had time to see it, so, but, I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Apex Excavation LLC to relocate a water line at Sixty-first and Broadway to be paid out of the utility water, no, utility fund water department, that's it.
Kyle?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments or discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero, governing body reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, or, I'm sorry, Brandy?
I have nothing.
Thank you.
I just have one comment, it was on one of the items tonight, and that's the drainage. I kind of look at this area down here, and it is people's backyards, but it is nothing inconsistent of what we've got drain water management looking at right now, down through the older part of town. Those all started as little swells, they ended up big ditches, and now we're trying to identify fixing them. This is some of the same issue, so, but it's on down the road fifty years, so we're not looking at it tonight.
Wow.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for coming tonight and being prepared, Kirk, thank you for your time, and then, I know that they're not in the building right now, but I do appreciate the residents coming and voicing their concern, it's always nice when we get to have communication with our constituents, face-to-face as well. So thank you for feeling comfortable enough to come out and state your issue.
Yeah, I want to echo that, I appreciate any time somebody comes out and addresses city council, I know that sometimes is nerve-wracking, and also sometimes complicated, but thank you for doing so. Real quick, Sean, on that, the, the areas along Ward Three, the horseshoe area, drainage ditches, those are city-owned, floodways, right? They're saying yes, in the back, so the drainage ditches that, that have been mentioned are city-owned, or... You're good, they're telling me yes, I'm gonna go with that, so I think that's why we make, there's... No, 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 I think, my point just being is, that's why we maintain those and take care of those.
I'm very hesitant on the cuff to sit there and say that they're city-owned.
Okay.
They're city-maintained, yes.
Okay, city-maintained.
Because, two years ago, we put out a stormwater drain management program that actually talks about which, because it is, it's a fine line, to sit there and say, which areas are we going to maintain, and which ones are we not. Russ, when he presented the plan two years ago, the way he kind of articulated is, look at the roads, when you have main roads like hydraulic and Sixty-first Street, we're gonna be responsible for that, but the smaller little roads to get to hydraulic, we're not responsible for that. It's pretty much in the drainage as well. You talked about the drainage just between, behind Denver and Evanston, that's, that's a major highway coming through the drainage of the city. We are going to make certain that we maintain that, but the city doesn't own that ditch. I mean, it's still owned by the property owners, and it's still their responsibility as well, but we have just taken that on, and said, generally speaking, on a normal basis, this is what we would take care of, and this is what we won't. So, like I said, I'm very hesitant to make definitive terms.
I'm following, I'm following there, okay, and that makes sense, and that's why...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, the other thing is, is we don't forget to vote August second, that is just one week from tonight, and early voting starts here, the twenty-eighth, right? So in two days, you can vote here at the city administration building there, so get out and vote.
Yeah, I was encouraged by the number of people who came out to voice their concerns, I would like to see more of that, because I know there are other concerns as well in the city, and for the people to feel welcome in, in coming and, and speaking, so I appreciate that. Also, there was, I've received some concerns about the water, water bills going up. There is a program called the E-WORK program, Emergency Water Assistance Program, it's a federal program, you can go to Department of Children and Families, to their website, and you can find out information about how to get help with that, if you're behind, or you have a disconnect notice, you can get information on what the criteria are to meet that program, it's a one-time fund that they will give you to help with that water and/or wastewater bill. Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, I'll just echo everything, appreciate everybody coming out and sharing tonight, and get out and vote next week, a lot of important things on the ballot, so I just hope everybody gets out and exercises their rights to vote.
Thank you, Charlie. Couple things of note I'd like to mention, is our BMX track, I don't know if any of you've seen it on social media, but they've really been doing some really good things, and have some great events coming up, but that BMX track is in really the best shape I've seen it in since, since it's been here. I noticed this weekend, they posted some stuff on social media, where they had a huge presence of, a great turnout of folks coming out and grinding, mowing, edging, putting stuff down, sticky stuff down on the track, it's gonna be in great shape, so I just wanted to pass that along, and this week, we have a CCUA meeting, just so you guys all know, there'll be a CCUA meeting this Thursday, so... That is all I have, I would entertain a non-debatable motion. Ben?
No move.
I'll second it.
Tom?
Lights aren't working.
Yeah, I shut you down. I have a motion by Ben, and a second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.